I'd like to bring tonight's meeting to order. We have a motion to bring this meeting to order. Moved by Annie Foster, second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance and make standing for a moment of silence in honor of retired ASK teacher Kathy Gross, who recently passed. Jason, would you raise your hand?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also pose that a teacher's day internet circle tool.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Annie. First tonight, our, let's see, I needed a motion for the approval of the board meeting agenda, please. Although it moved by Bill Harris.
Aye.
Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First presentation tonight is football cheerleaders with advisor Christine Natty.
Where do you want me to do them?
If you want me to back camera.
These things, so they have to fall on the camera?
Yeah, that's a camera. Yeah, you can do that out of their way.
You take up a lot of space. So, thank you, Dr. Bell, for inviting us. This is my varsity squad. Dr. Bell invited us to tell you a little bit about what we did starting our season. We start our season at a four-day overnight intensive camp. And at that camp, we won two first-place trophies, four spirit sticks, one spirit and kindness award, and several All-American nominees. All-American nominees, raise your hands. All right. Woo! And one of our, so basically what they do is they're nominated and they can try out for the All-American team. They all tried out for me because I made them. However, we did have one of our cheerleaders make that team this year, Casey Lynch. She is awesome. And she was also invited to audition to be a part of the NCA staff, so to be a professional cheerleader. So, that's pretty cool. So, I have my captors, Cor Mason, Sally Miesk, Jackson Bernal, Casey Lynch, and Jeanette Fountain. I have my juniors, Ashley Emerson, Delilah Allen, Annabelle X., Malina Hernandez, and I also have senior Haley Dugdale, Carly Acavito, I can't see who's next, Sam Stewart, Jocelyn Decker. And hiding in the back here, I have sophomore Emerson Sotelo, Abigail Van Orden, Leilani Logan, and Ava Petito. So, at camp, we also, because we won those prestigious awards, my seniors also qualified to go to Disney World. So, we are feverishly raising money to leave for Disney in just a little over two months. We leave on the 16th of November, and they will perform down Main Street in Magic Kingdom at Disney World. So if anyone sees any crazy fundraising going around, we have t-shirts, sponsorships, and we have pickle sales coming, and we have, what else do we have? We have clothing drive on Saturday, and we will be at the Fall Police Festival on Sunday. And we were at the Moon Festival last weekend. So, it is consuming all of our time, but well worth it for them to help pay for their trips to Disney. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Where's Mr. Marata? Mr. Marata, you want to start the next one about our TED Talk? This is gonna be pretty neat. I don't think I've ever seen anything like this with a high school student. This is great.
You gotta have Annie's shirt, man.
Whatever you want.
You gotta get nervous with the microphone.
Yeah, right.
I would get nervous too, but that's okay. Oh, you just, that shows.
I don't see Noemi here, unfortunately, but we did want to celebrate one of our high school seniors. She did a TED Talk Friday night in Olliaza. Absolutely incredible. She applied on her own. She got accepted. She was the youngest speaker, so we are gonna be sending all of this out. We have it all ready to go. But she talked about bias in AI and these programs that are happening, but the biases that are in there, really well done. So, we just want to show you just 30 to 60 seconds, but then we're gonna send this out on our website and social media. But it is the senior, Noemi Florence, and Mr. Lozaro Sharon, she is a wonderfully young lady, and just wait till you hear her speak, she is tremendous. So, we're gonna run it just one minute, and again, we'll put this out, so everyone will be able to see and celebrate this young lady.
Please welcome Noemi Florence.
Did we all hear that? That quiet underground applause? But what if we had a different kind of applause just then, a more eerie one? One where everyone was clapping at the same time? The magic of a kind of thing, isn't it? And that's what makes the ground applause so beautiful. The fact that everyone is clapping differently, at speeds, volume to the different frequencies, it's an art. The diversity of the class is what makes one round of applause. This concept of diversity, creating one beautiful thing, is such a pillar of everything. Especially it would I, as your speaker in a long before, will be speaking about today concerning AI and algorithmic bias.
So again, we'll share that out, and we are gonna present this to Noemi Florence from school, and just tremendous, really proud of her. So, take a look for the talks.
Okay, the next thing that I wanted to talk about is something called our annual report. And this is something that's new to Port Jervis this year. I've done it every year that I've been a superintendent now. And what the annual report is all about is it's a narrative about all the highlights of the past school year, a whole host of pictures that go with the narrative, and then a great deal of data related to the school year as well. And it's a public document that is up on our website. And the reason is, it's to celebrate the year that just passed, but it's also a way to show the community how their tax dollars are invested in the future of the education of our kids. So if you guys have that, do you have that? If you go to the website, and then you go to the leadership page, once you get to the leadership page, there are choices on the left-hand side, and the annual report is there. So you just go to the leadership page, click on the annual report. It might take some time for the actual pictures to load, but you can do this at your own leisure. There's a cover letter from me, there's a page called the district at a glance, there's a data dashboard of some key information that people might want to know about our district. And then it goes into each individual school has their own report. And then maybe if you can get it to open, you go to the table of contents page. And then all the support departments also have their own page. So there you can see some of the topics. So you can learn more about the schools, you can learn more about DPS and technology, athletics, B&amp;G, food service, Hall of Fame, and human resources. And what's nice about this, not only is it nice to summarize everything that happened last school year and have it all in one document, it's also nice in future years to be able to go back when we want to study something. When did attendance start going up in this building or down in this building? When did the graduation rates start to climb? Having this historical document on our website allows us to go back and track data from year to year, so that we can show that we're improving from year one to year two to year three. So we'll produce this document every year. So, but I encourage you, if you get a chance, go to our website, go to our website homepage, click on the leadership page, and then click on annual report, and you can learn all kinds of things about the district. And again, for the taxpayers, it gives them a really good feel of what is my money being spent on? And taxes are an investment in the future of our community because it's the money we spend on our kids. So it gives people an idea, because if their kids are grown and gone, they may not have any idea of what's going on in the schools anymore. So this is a way to communicate this to everybody in the community about all the things that are going on in the schools. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next, we have our student representative, Jocelyn Decker.
Hello, everybody, and good evening. Before I can begin, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve tonight. I am a senior here at Port Jervis High School, and I'm your senior representative. With school just starting, we don't have much, but our fall sports are in full gear. On Friday night, we have our first varsity football away game versus Minnesota. Following that, on Saturday, our senior class has a mini field trip to Dorney Park, following that with the Dorney Hawn. Next week starts Spirit Week, and we're really excited for homecoming. On the 29th will be the game, and on the 30th of Saturday will be our dance. A lot of pluses are starting in the Port Jervis High School, with this week and next week being our first meeting of the year to get into the school year. I and the student body are excited for a fun and eventful school year at Port Jervis High School. Everyone have a nice saying.
Thank you very much, Jocelyn. Next, we have public comments. We have two speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Mitchell Conklin, speaking on the honored flight. Mitchell?
Good evening from the board and public. Hi, everyone, my name is Mitchell Conklin. I'm a sixth grader at HBE, the resident of Port Jervis. First of all, I would like to thank everyone in the school district for all their hard work in getting the building trend for this year. Everything looks great, and it is greatly appreciated, especially from a kid's point of view. Second, I'm back again for another year giving back to the community and hoping for others to do the same. Since I last saw you, I've been actively helping around the community. You may have seen me doing odd little jobs, showing for our other residents, going for those same folks at the Italian festival as the gondol boy, or at the Hudson Valley Auto Flight. Yes, I'm here today to talk about the Hudson Valley Auto Flight again. For those of you who do not know, the Auto Flight is a free program that takes veterans on a round trip flight to Washington DC to see memorials. It's my mission to give every veteran on the flight a blanket, letters for local and sincere thank you for their service. It is a great feeling when we say thank you to the veteran, they respond to it proudly, but from our go-to town and school district. They cry, they smile, and they truly know how much they are appreciated when they receive it all. It doesn't sound like a big deal, but it really is. Each veteran will be presented with a blanket as a thank you, and the meet and greet, which this year is October 8th. The meet and greet is a pre-flight watch-in where the veterans meet their chaperones and are able to mingle with their fellow veterans. As always, I'll be working with our own Flo Santini to make this happen. She, as you know, is absolutely amazing. I'm grateful to her. This year is even more special for us because HBE's art teacher, Ms. Kilgore's husband will be chaperoning, or his father, grandpa, out of this flight. Again, we're asking every student adult in the school district to make out one thank you for the auto flight, so that no veteran is left out. I'll pick them up from each school and office on October 2nd. Please consider doing this. We are close to the community, and a kind gesture means so much, it goes a long way. Just a quick thank you for your service, with a heart or a smile in your face brings it, brings it to death. Thank you for letting me speak, and I look forward to doing one with you in the very near future. I look forward to representing Port Jervis well at the auto flight. Welcome to come see this fantastic organization. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Our next speaker this evening is Michael Mello for BOSE.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here again. It's been a while since I've been here. It's kind of different being on this side. I'm here, I have three things that I just wanted to speak tonight. One is, as a BOSE's board member, several years ago, we started liaison between board members and our controlling school district. And I cover Pine Bush, Minnesota, and across my home district, King of Club Jervis. Okay. Thank you. Got that?
Yep, thank you, Michael.
Okay. So, the last several years with COVID, things kind of got pushed aside, so some of the board members weren't able to get to districts. We're gonna try, you know, with a new school year, we're gonna try to get that back running. So hopefully you'll see me here at least once in a while, maybe. Second thing is, in a way to bring closer cooperation between BOSE's and component districts, we have tours that are set up for board members, and you probably all have this information. First tour is gonna be October 11th at the Odden Hill campus, and that's from 9:00 to 1:00. I know that's in the middle of workday for many people, but it's a way to see the building with students in, to see some of the programs that's going on. There'll be another one of Odden Hill in the spring, March 12th. And then November 20th will be Gibson Road Campus, Amy Boker's campus, same time, 9:00 to 1:00. And again, you'll get to see the students and the programs. And lastly, I just want to wish you all a good school year. Looks like it's going off well, and the luck of the Capitol Project, as it continues, looks like it's moving along. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate it. Next, our administrative reports. Dr. John Bell, super generalist.
Thank you, just have a few reminders for everyone. First of all, the school year is off to a good start in many respects, and now we're in the open house season, so the parents are running all over the place, getting ready to go to all the open houses. The new bus company, W Transportation, is up and running. They started with summer school, and they've had some hiccups along the way. Of course, we do every September with school buses, so trying to get everything timed out, but we're glad you're here, and they're working really hard. And I want to do a shout out to Lynette Daniford, who's our transportation person that works really closely between the schools and contractor to make everything work and find every kid and say, if this kid didn't get on the bus, where is he? It's an amazing amount of work that goes into what she does, so thank you to Lynette and to W. I also wanted to mention about Election Day in November. There was an article in the Record today, if you didn't see it. There is a proposition that is up for all the voters of New York State this year that doesn't affect most people, but it does affect all the small city school districts. Back, there was an amendment to the Constitution of New York State in 1951 that said small city school districts could only borrow up to 5% debt limit, and all the other school districts, central school districts, union free school districts, et cetera, they can all borrow up to 10%. Now, it doesn't apply to us, we don't need to borrow at that level. The history was that prior to 1997, small city school districts did not have to have their budgets approved by the public. That's only been going on for about 25 years. So, in the old days, when you didn't have to take your budget out for a small city school district, but the people right next door at Minnesota and Pine Bush always had to, there were tighter parameters on spending for small city schools and borrowing. So what they're doing now is they're asking the voters of the state to vote yes to allow small city school districts to have the ability to take on as much debt as all the other schools. Right now, the small cities are in a disadvantage. So you'll hear more about that as it comes up to election time. But it's basically, it's to create one playing field for all school districts. Now that we all wrote on our budgets, there's about six or seven different things that are more punitive against small city schools, and they're trying to get all the school districts, whether you're a big city, small city, union free, or a central school district, have all the same rules for everybody. So you'll probably hear more about that, and your neighbors may ask you, if you're employees, they may ask you, hey, what's this all about in November? And it has no direct implication to us today, because we're not looking to borrow at 5% of our total budget or even 10%, but it just gives all small city school districts latitude in the future to be treated the same as all other school districts, and that's what it's about. As you drive up and down East Main Street, you see Phase One, the middle school project, and Mr. Tim will talk about that a little bit. I wanted to remind everybody, Phase Two is work that will happen on this campus. All the fields outside, converting ASK classrooms into middle school tech ed rooms, home ed rooms, things of that nature. That's Phase Two, and that will be going out to bid in about the middle of October, so that we're ready to hit the ground running next spring and summer for all of Phase Two, which is all the work that happens out here. Baseball field, softball field, tennis courts, basketball court, three fields in front of ASK for middle school schools. So, that was approved by the voters back in 2020. We're finally getting to the point now where we're gonna do the work next spring and summer. And then, the voters last May approved Phase Three. That's the work on Chase Field, Glenette Field, the high school auditorium, the high school library, and some high school science rooms. And those drawings were approved by the voters back in May, and since then, our architects and engineers have been doing all the labor, drawing all the loopers up. And that's going to State End in October, with the expectation that we'll get approval from State End, either in late January or early February, and we will actually begin Phase Three next March. So we have Phase One going on, then Phase Two, and Phase Three are all gonna be happening at the same time. So there's a lot going on in the construction and architectural side. And if everything goes according to plan, we'll have graduation at Glenette next year, not Chase Field, because Glenette Field will be all done by next June, but Chase will not. They'll have new lights, new scoreboard, new turf at Glenette, so we'll go back to Glenette. Who out there is a Port Jervis graduate graduated from Glenette? Anybody? Oh, yeah, there's quite a few. Most from the old days. Yep. In the old days, it was always at Glenette because they had more bleachers. And then when the bleachers were condemned one year, and they had to come to Chase, it's been there ever since. So we're gonna go back at least for one year, because all the work at Glenette will be done before graduation, whereas the Chase Field project, which is the field, the lights, the scoreboard, and the track, will take from the middle of May all the way through August to get it done. So that's why we're moving graduation next year, so we'll have that. I just wanted to remind people too, if you're coming to pay your taxes in person, we haven't had in-person tax payments since COVID, and a lot of people in town are very happy to be able to just stop by the district office and pay their taxes. But on your tax bill, it says 150 Pike Street, and if you park on Pike Street and go to the front door at 150 Pike, you're either gonna show up at Orange County Mental Health or Catholic Charities. We're all the way in the back of the building, and there's a big parking lot, handicap accessible entrance, but some people are really tuckered out by the time they get all the way around back after they've knocked on about six doors, trying to find out where they pay their taxes. So if you know anybody who's gonna pay their taxes in person, remind them, come up West Room Street by the car wash, and come into the back parking lot, and there's a door, there's double doors with a big red canopy that says PJ Administrative Offices. That's where they want to go. I saw my old football coach, Bob Corbino, he walked all the way around the building today before he finally paid his taxes, and when I go try and took his money, so everything was good. So just spread the word to everybody that it's around back, back by the car wash. That'll be easier for them to know. The warnings are in.
Yep.
Yeah, the warnings are in, both for DPS and for our office. I also wanted to say thank you to Kristin. She did all the hard work of putting the annual report together into one document. It came from about 12 different people, and it looked different from everyone, and she made it all look alike. And I wanted to say thank you to Flo, because the 9/11 ceremony was pretty important, as it really was, so thank you for that. And then finally, our big kick this year, you're gonna keep hearing about it all year long, attendance matters. We want kids in school, we want staff in school, we want kids in school because you can't learn if you're not there, and we want our staff in school because we want our A10 teaching our kids, not the subs. We want, no offense to the subs, but they're not the A10, we want our A10 here. So, attendance matters. That's the last thing for you tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next, Dr. Natasha Walkowicz, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction.
Good evening. Just a few comments. Our opening superintendent conference days were well received. I just want to thank everyone who provided feedback. There was quite a bit of positive feedback, so thank you so much for that. On conference day, we opened with fanfare from our cheerleaders and songsters, remarks by Dr. Bell, and we had some workshops with our trainers in-house, from our guest trainers in-house, teachers and administrators, and we had some PBIS fun as well that day, both days. And it just made things exciting for opening day with opening up our teachers and getting them ready for school to begin. On behalf of the PLC, staff feedback is always appreciated and will be shared at our first meeting coming up soon, to plan for the future superintendent conference days. As stated last month, Port Jervis City School was approved to offer an Individual Arts Assessment Pathway, which is known as IAAP. It's equivalent to a fifth Regents Assessment for graduation. And on conference day, it provided some professional development to our new team of art teachers, music, and guidance staff to build those components for that graduation pathway. We're also assessing what students might be eligible for this year's graduation for that pathway requirement. So I just want to commend that team for their hard work so far, and we have quite a bit to do to make that possible before the end of the school year. And anyone who's interested, who hasn't signed up for Education Committee, we will be discussing the IAAP then. Speaking of committees, we had 66 staff members so far sign up for our committees this year, including the Health and Wellness, Safety, Professional Learning, Education, and Student Voice Committees at our middle school and high school. Each committee, administrative, believe, will be sending out notices to those who signed up for those committees. And PLC, I lead the PLC, which will be held Wednesday, September 27th at 3:30 PM. And the Education Committee, which I also hold, will be held Tuesday, October 3rd at 5:00 PM, both in the high school library, and will also be accessible via remote or in-person. If there are any community members who want to join the Education Committee, please reach out to Jeri Anne or myself at district office. And just some exciting things on the horizon for this school year. We are doing a soft rollout of our Project Lead the Way. Our teachers have been getting trained either over the summer or currently to roll this out this school year for K-8. Our sixth through eighth will be rolling out in the spring, so they're getting some pretty intensive training at that level, our middle school level. And our high school teachers will be getting trained this year for a possible rollout next fall. And those will be in the form of elective offerings. That will be also tied to college pathways in our STEM. So for those who might not know, Project Lead the Way, it is a science, technology, and engineering component that we're adding to our district this year that will support all those science, technology, and engineering standards we have to accomplish. And other things this year, we're fast and furious with our Wellston Foundations and Just Words for our K-12 programs. Our teachers are getting more intensive training more than ever this year to make sure that we are ready and able to go. I know I've heard a lot of great things from our teachers and parents about our foundations and Just Words so far. So just stay tuned. We'll have some more presentations upcoming.
Thank you, Natasha. Next, Mr. John Timm, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Thank you. So an update on the middle school project. May 31st, 2024 is the target date for substantial completion of the project at the middle school. It's May 31st. What that means is the majority of the interior work will be complete. We'll be able to start moving teachers into the building over the summertime. From May 31st through the summer, will be site work on the exterior work, the road work around, the field work will be done. That's what will be done through the summer. So moving on to committees, as mentioned, I'm scheduling the Health and Wellness and Safety Committee meetings for Wednesday, October 11th. It is not too late to still sign up. The more people that are here, it's a community effort, especially safety and of course wellness. So if you're registered, just reach out to me. So it's not too late. And once again, October 11th, I'll send out an invitation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chair. Next, our consent agenda items. Item A are the minutes from August 22, 2023, regular meeting. Item B is the August 29th, 2023 special meeting. Item C are the minutes, CBSE meeting minutes, from June 7th, 23 through August 30th, 2023. Item D are the minutes, CSE meeting minutes, from August 16th, 2023 through September 12th, 2023. Item E is the treasurer's financial report for August of 2023. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor, please?
Move.
Moved by Nan Dunn. Second?
Second.
Second by Judy Mato. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Six are personnel employment agenda items. Item A is retirement, support staff position 67, courier. Item B is resignation, support staff, position 614, custodian. Item C are leave of absences. Item D is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2526, position 2635, probationary school monitor. Item E is an appointment, vacancy, 2535, curriculum coordinators, co-curricular coordinators, and coaching appointments for the 2324 school year. Item F, support staff, vacancy 2564, student behavioral stipends for teacher aides and assistants for the 2324 school year. Item G, appointment, support staff, vacancy 2565, student hygiene stipend for teacher aides for the 2324 school year. Item H is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2571, position 510, probationary food service helper. Item I is appointment, support staff, vacancy 2571, position 3309, probationary food service helper. Item J is an appointment, support staff, substitute teacher aide. Item K is an appointment, support staff, vacancy 2573, position 4005, probationary school monitor. Item L is appointment, substitute teachers and nurses for the 2324 school year. Item M, increase of hours, support staff, position 438, food service helper. Item N is amendments to board docs, personnel agenda item from August 8, 2023. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor, please? Moved by Michael Witt.
Second.
Second by Bill Harris. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Seven are action items. Item A is the school police officer agreement for 2023 through 2026. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor? Moved by Jason Kaymar.
I'll second it.
Second by Annie Foster. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the Port Jervis Free Library Payment Schedule for the 202324 school year. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor? Moved by Michael Witt.
A second.
Second by Cara Rapp. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is facility use agreement between the Port Jervis City School District Athletic Department and Camp Reimagine, Inc. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor? Moved by Jason Kaymar.
I'll second it.
Second by Annie Foster. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D are amendment numbers three and four to BCA Architects and Engineers Contract Regarding Additional Structural Engineering Costs. Do we have a motion to bring that to the floor?
I'll move it.
Moved by Cara Rapp. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Annie Foster. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is an appointment for lead evaluator of teachers for the 2324 school year. Do we have a motion? Moved by Annie Foster.
I'll second it.
Second by Bill Harris. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital project allowances and change orders. Do we have a motion on that? Moved by Michael Witt. Second? By Annie Foster. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is an agreement with Regional Economic Community Action Program, Inc. Recap Regarding Universal Pre-K Program. Do we have a motion on that? Moved by Annie Foster. Second?
Second.
Second by Jason Kaymar. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are board member items. We have the Deer Park Liaison. Flo, anything?
No, just wanted to thank everyone who came out for our September 11th service last week. As Mr. Bell said, it was very emotional. But I appreciate everybody that comes out and joins us for this day of solemn service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Next is Port Jervis Liaison. Annie?
We're having our 30th Annual Fall Foliage Festival, Sunday, September 24th, from 10 to 5, downtown historic Port Jervis. Also, our Tourism Board is hosting a spook spectacular on October 28th at 4:30 in downtown Port Jervis. Also, there's a teen night for the Port Jervis Middle School students, Friday, September 22nd, from 6 to 9, at the U Center. And then also, the Grace Community Church will sponsor a Halloween trunk or treat on October 29th, from 4:30 to 7:30, after the Halloween parade at Riverside Park. And I do want to say, with paying the taxes, my poor Jenny, I sent her this money for me, and they were up broke in the eye. She said, how can you do this to them? And they went out of their way with a long line, and they did, they do help them. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Now, Annie, you mentioned the Port Jervis Halloween parade.
Yeah.
How many years was your mom?
Oh, yeah, she was the first one.
She was the grand marshal probably 30, 40 years, right?
Yeah.
Maybe even more.
Oh, yeah. Fifty-three.
Fifty-three years. She was the grand marshal. You better get going. You got a lot of years.
Next are board member comments. Judy?
I'd just like to wish Nancy Baker happy retirement. It's a long time.
Yes. Nan?
Good luck to Nancy, but a big thank you to Chris Addy, especially if she's still here. That's such a tremendous amount of work that she puts in. And I don't think that we really even can appreciate how many man-hours that that takes, everything that she does, fundraising, traveling. So a big thank you to her, and congratulations to her all-American cheerleader. That's quite a, quite a feather, yeah.
Jason? Okay, thank you. Annie?
I have a comment. Andrew, I like your, when you interview people and that. I have a lot of comments on that. They asked me about you and stuff. So I asked John tonight, what do I study? What are you? And he told me your position in that.
Italian.
Yeah, tabs.
He's a lot of Marotta.
Oh, God, my, I'm going to sit together. But I get a lot of comment on that. I like you on Flo, how you do your hair. And we, thank you.
Okay. Just want to throw this out. Annie's looking for volunteers to slice peppers.
Yeah.
Anybody's interested, please.
Anybody get some rest, you know, I'll even cook in the back. We'll have lunch, yes. Anybody watch the job? Sooner than the house.
There you go. Michael, anything?
Just congratulations to the cheerleaders, wishing everybody a great year. And the interviews by Mr. Marotta have been incredible, performing crime roles, it's great. So keep coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Bell?
I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge our IT team. Today is IT Professional Day, and if it weren't for them, we wouldn't be seen, heard. We wouldn't have these computers in front of us. And our everyday life would be probably turmoil if it wasn't for Mike and his crew there. So I just wanted to take my hat off to them and say thank you very much for your devotion to the district.
Yeah.
I've been a little covered in I'm used to the BMW this week, so I can't help it.
All right. Thank you, Bell. Flo?
Yes, please. I just would like to thank everybody for everything that they've done. I'm going to talk to you about taxes. The Hudson Valley Honor Flight, as Mitchell said, is such a sweetheart. And everything that the Conklin family has done all these years. I don't know how many, 14 years they've been doing the blankets. And these are for veterans. They used to when they came off the plane, but it's gotten so big, there was no place for people to stand and the veterans to come through to hand them the blankets. So now we do it at the meet and greet. Now we know that they can take them home and cherish them, you know? Because that's, I knew with Tars, you know? But I want to thank the Conklin family, everybody from Mike, wife, Mitchell, but before that, Mike, Matthew, everybody, I want to thank you so much because that's a lot of hard work. I give them bags of blankets. I mean, John, you know from DV, DV Quilters. Unbelievable. I sit there and I cry when I see what these people have done. But they bring them home, and they wrap them, and they put them in ribbon, and they, I mean, thank you. You know, that's all we can say about what you do for the Honor Flight. And I want to thank you with all my heart. They got me involved in the blankets. I don't know why. I don't talk to them anymore. Okay, taxes. I wish I had a nickel for everybody who came into my office that wanted to know where to pay taxes. So we came up with, you know where the bowling alley is? Go to the bowling alley, go across the street, and then go across the next street. Because nobody knows where to pay the taxes. I mean, a lot of people want to pay school taxes, I'm probably me anyway, but they can't. But now it's like, you can't go to the front of the building. It's not, it's 150, but they're in the back of the building. I don't know how to make this easier for the public. I mean, who's talking, Port knows, Port would know more, that the Deer Park residents or whatever, but...
We've got signs all over the building.
But that's the building.
The goodness they have you, Flo.
Just send them around.
The goodness they have you.
And after this year, it won't be an issue because now everybody will know. So it's just getting paid this much.
No, they won't because they still try paying taxes by the, to you.
They still try.
That's because they're always there, yeah, taking taxes.
They trade our debt. Yeah.
Thank you.
Flo, thank you so much.
The cheerleaders are wonderful. I mean, they're working so hard, and I know they're trying to raise money and stuff. And if anybody can help them, please, because you can see it, it's in their hearts. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Flo. Cara?
I just wanted to thank, I'm assuming it's Mr. Marotta. I think I know his handwriting for the cool pork trinkets that we got here, so thank you for those. And just wanted to share, well, I'm happy that I get my taxes escrowed, apparently, so I don't have to go find them in the building. But also wanted to say, I was able to go to Open House at HVE, and it was just a wonderful experience to meet the teachers and just, I left with just feelings so hopeful about the upcoming school year. So just great job, and gratitude to all the teachers.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, thanks for that message last Thursday, Annie, by the way.
I thought I ate all game.
It's kind of the way we want it, but it's being, it's being well taken care of, and I'll spit china every day in a metal tap.
You've got some nice stickers there.
Put on it.
That was Marotta.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have a dates to remember. Cara, please.
Okay, dates to remember. On Wednesday, September 20th, ASK Open House for grades 1 through 3 from 7 to 8 at ASK. Thursday, September 21st, ASK Open House for grades 4 through 6, 7 to 8 a.m. at ASK. We have ASK Picture Day on September 22nd, from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. at ASK. High School Spirit Week is September 25th to 29th. And the High School Open House is Tuesday, September 26th, from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. at the high school. The Middle School Open House is Wednesday, September 27th, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the high school. HVE PTA Meeting is Thursday, September 28th, at 3:30 p.m. at HVE in room 10. The High School Pep Rally is Friday, September 29th, 1:15 p.m. in the high school gym. The HVE PTA Fall Carnival Social is Friday, September 29th, 5 to 7 p.m. at HVE. ASK Bingo Family Fun Night is Friday, September 29th, from 6 to 8 at ASK. The Homecoming Social is Saturday, September 30th. Time TBA, it's at the PJHS Gym. High School Underclassmen Photos for grades 9 through 11 is Tuesday, October 3rd, from 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the high school. HVE Book Fair Family Night is Tuesday, October 3rd, from 5 to 7 p.m. at HVE. High School Wellness Day, Wednesday, October 4th, 10:30 to 1:27 p.m. at the high school gym. Early Dismissal Drill this year is Friday, October 6th, and that is countywide. And that's usually about 15 minutes early. High School Full Drama Dial M for Murder is the weekend of Friday and Saturday, October 6th and 7th, at 7 p.m. in the high school auditorium. Columbus Day is district-wide closing on Monday, October 9th. PSAT will take place Wednesday, October 11th, from 8 to 12 in the high school gym. HVE Picture Day is Thursday, October 12th, at HVE. College and Career Fair is Thursday, October 12th, from 10:30 to 12:30 in the high school gym. HVE Fire Safety Day is Friday, October 13th, at HVE. The ASK Color Run is Sunday, October 15th, from 12 to 2 at ASK. And our next board event meeting is Tuesday, October 17th, 7 p.m. here in the high school cafe.
Okay, Cara, thank you very much. All right, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Annie Foster.
I'll second.
Second by Nan Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Have a great evening, everyone.